Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting of October 14, 2014. I want to thank the Garden Club for the flowers they always provide for our meetings. Very nice. Roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here. And Councilmember Salazar is excused this evening with notice. Jamie Monizon, ladies and the pledge, please.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We have one announcement this evening. There will not be a city council meeting on November 11, 2014, a legal holiday. According to the municipal code, any regular city council meeting that falls on a legal holiday shall be held on the next business day. The regular meeting on November 12, 2014, is canceled. Item number four, presentations. We have a number of presentations this evening. The first one is Present Beautification Task Force. And I'm going to give it off to Irene.
Thank you. Before I start the actual awards, we have a couple of projects that we're highlighting today. Before I even do that, I'd like to introduce you to or tell you about my Beautification Task Force members. And a few of them are here tonight, but I'm going to read you the whole list. It won't take very long. So I have Sally Calvert, Jane Calvert, Sandy Headley, who is here tonight, Emil Hans, Carolyn Livinggood, who is also here, Bridget Lopez, Carol Moriarty, Val Morgan, who is here, Melody Tobin, who's here, Felicia Nerby from Recology, and Joan Burrell, who is an honorary member. These are the people that work so hard to do the presentations, to actually get all the programs that we do together, the Operation Clean Sweep, I'm sure some of you know, and the Centennial Tree Project, and the Adopt a Planter Project that we'll be telling you about in just a second. So what I'd like to do tonight is start out with the Centennial Tree Project. I have some people in the audience that I recognize that have had a centennial tree planted. And those of you who haven't and who would like to, I hope you sign up there. This is our 100th year, I hope you all know that. This is our 100th year anniversary. And to celebrate that in a lasting way, I wanted, and the Beautification Task Force sponsored, planting 100 street trees. And these are free trees from the city, and the city will maintain them for the life of the tree. And in fact, if the tree dies, the city will replace them. So it's a bargain all around. And if you happen to see the presentation before the council meeting, it talked about trees and why they're so important. So I have a certificate for the people who have a tree. And if those people who had planted a tree, would you come up here and I will tell you about them? So I can come on. If you all come up here, you had a tree planted. Come on, Ben. I'm happy to come up here because the camera will be off. And the people who are here are representing the 57 trees that we planted so far. We have 17 trees. Oh. They represent the 57 trees that we've planted so far. We have 17 more trees that are scheduled to be planted this next Saturday. And then we have slots for 18 more trees, because I've already had some promised. So if you hear this announcement and you would like a street tree, please look on the city website and you'll see where it tells about it. And it has my email address, and you can sign up for a tree. So you get the certificate. This happens to be for the first person who had a tree planted. And it has your name, your family name on it, has your address on it, and has the certificate telling you which number of trees is yours. So we hope that you will all take yours there outside in the lobby. We hope you take some cookies, because there's a lot of them. And we hope that you will enjoy your trees for many years to come. So thank you. And does anyone want to say anything? Jamie?
I love my tree. It's beautiful. I love my tree. It's beautiful. I encourage everybody to have one.
Well, thank you very much for coming. And we invite you to stay for a little bit longer and see the rest of the program. So thank you. Next part of our program is called Adopt a Planter. And I have a clicky thing here that I haven't used before. Hold on, could you? Thank you. And so I will try that out. And I've been told by my tech person to point it at the, oops, now I'm doing the wrong thing, to point it at the, ah, there we go. This is a program for the businesses. Let me see if I can do this. On San Mateo Avenue, they, most of you know San Mateo Avenue has these planters in front of them, and I believe that's one of them. And the planters have trees in them, but not much else. So they don't look all that attractive. So one of the things that the Beautification Task Force members wanted to do is beautify that area. So we are honoring seven businesses tonight. Some of them have been honored before, but we wanted to give them new certificates because they've kept their planters up. And this is what happens. You can see on the left that the planters get planted with flowers and shrubs that are low maintenance, low water. And they also get a plaque that says "Adopted by" and whatever the name of the business is. And Tandy Leather is one of them, so you can see how attractive, much more attractive that is than that very first picture you saw. And I don't know if there's any representatives from the businesses here. Could you raise your hand if you are? No? Okay. I'll just go through these. It's a little advertising for the businesses. And you all now know what the program is like, so you can encourage the business on San Mateo Avenue that they can adopt this. They can contact Jamie at the San Bruno Chamber, and we'll get you started on it. So this was Tandy Leather. I always say this wrong. Didly do, thank you. Didly do. Summers Laundry. Acostis Just Things. He also has two planters there in front. Grand Leader Market. Never Too Late. They took over that planter even though it wasn't right in front of them. That was very nice of them. And now the Citibank is our newest. They actually have three, four planters. This one in front, this one also in front by the clock, but from Rotary, which is a nice addition to the San Mateo Avenue. And that was that. So even though they're not here, let's give them an applause. So, before I go on, I have my script here, and I woefully forgot to say a few things. So before we go on, I want to make sure I say these things. I want to thank, and I thank, I saw him earlier. I want to thank, ah, there's Renee. Renee Walsh. He is our main man when it comes to planting the 100 trees. I send him emails, I whine to him, and he gets the trees. He double checks that the place people want them to be planted is an okay place, that the roots won't grow into the utility lines. He goes back if my volunteers don't plant them properly or whatever happens. So I'd like us all to thank Renee and his team. I also want to thank a few more people that actually go out in the morning with us. They dig the holes and they plant the trees. It's not staff who does this part. So it was the Boy Scouts of Troop 72, the Interactive Club of Cappuccino High School, the San Bruno, some San Bruno Lions, San Bruno Rotary, and just some residents of San Bruno. And especially, I want to thank Mark Tobin, who's Melody's husband. He was so outstanding. He's planted over 10 trees just by himself. Well, a little help from friends, right? So I just want to make sure we thank him, too. Okay. The next thing that we have is the Beautification Awards themselves. And I want to thank Larry Franzella and Prudential Realty. They donate the money for the prizes that you'll be getting. They donate these plaques that the first place winners will be receiving. And they donated the money for the little party that we had and the reception that we had out front. So, moving right along. Our first, I make sure I do this right. This is our 18th year of doing Beautification Awards. We have three categories. The first category is single-family. Well, this is in general what the awards are designed to recognize the efforts of residents. We didn't do any businesses this year, but public entities, and focus on the exteriors that require significant commitment on the part of the property owner or renter. And the first one is single-family resident. And this is for people who have, for curve appeal, that in general, they are attractive and pleasant to live by or to live near or pass by. And what, the first category are going to be people that have been nominated for the different categories, and then we'll tell you the winners, third, second, and first place. So as you go through these, the homes were nominated either by Beautification Task Force people or residents of San Bruno. So 161 Popular Avenue, 172 Popular, Poplar, 122 Cypress, 123 Cypress, this is a nice neighborhood, 127 Cypress, 308 Oak, 468 Oak, 420 Cedar, 424 Taylor Avenue. It's an older, one of the older houses in the neighborhood, near the heart of San Bruno. 390 Chilton Lane, 3631 Exeter, thank you. It's one of my problems. And now we come to the third place winner, which is 640, oops, I'm so sorry, I forgot Elm, 169 Elm Avenue. And now, it's Hensley Avenue. And you can see the details, the paint, the lavish door, and all the details that make this, have a lot of curve appeal. So are the people who live on 640 Hensley Avenue here? Oh, come on up. So they'll receive a certificate. A check for $20 that was donated, and our gratitude for you working so hard.
I'm nervous.
Oh, no, can't be worse than me. So would you like to say anything?
No, I just thank you for nominating us.
Yeah, thank you.
This is for you. And would you, no, yes, no, like to say something?
We just like a, it's a hobby, and it's a good hobby, keeping the house clean.
Oh, it's your hobby? And it's lovely. You can really tell how much you enjoy it.
Yes, in and out, total. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we're very glad you could come. The next one is the second prize, and this is 1701 Carlmont Drive, Clermont, someday, in the next 19 years or so, I'll get them right. The Pellegrini's, are the Pellegrini's here? No, I didn't see them. But they will be receiving a certificate and a check for $25. And then we have our first place winner, 1077 San Felipe Avenue. And this is the side yard and the front, and you can see all the detail and how lovely they've put this all together. So are they here today? Oh.
George and Sandra Fisher.
George and Sandra Fisher, are you here?
I'm here.
I thought you weren't. Well, they were intended to be here, and I guess something held them up. So we will make sure they get their plaque and everything, but we can give them a hand of applause anyway. The next category is improved property. These were nominated by people other than ourselves. Unfortunately, we don't have before pictures, but you can imagine from what you'll see, they used to look like the picture on the left, and they've had a lot of improvements. So the second place winner is 349 Taylor Avenue. They redone, they've added the top, they added the different details that you can see, and they've done a lot of work. And if you know the Taylor Avenue at all, you know it's very small and narrow, and they've done a lot with their space. So are the?
Rashman and Prasad.
Rashman?
Rashman and Prasad.
Prasad, are they here tonight?
Yeah.
Oh, you are. Come in.
They're big smiles.
Yay. Congratulations. You've really worked hard, and it shows. Would you like to say anything?
I want to thank you very much to my husband. He really deserves it, because he did a lot of work, you know, in front, outside, and inside of the house. I want to thank you to my mom and dad, too, in helping me with this.
And you will be proud to know that it was a neighbor that nominated you. Somebody really noticed how much you did on your house and how great improvements you made. And then our first place winner is 172 Acacia Avenue. And the person, you can see they redid the sidewalk, they changed the cement into the decorative stones, they put vinyl paneling, they painted the tram, they did a lot of changes. So we would like to honor them for all their efforts and?
Mark and Jan Foreman.
Mark and Jan Foreman. Oh, you're here. Yay. Come on down. Well, we're very proud to present this to you.
Oh, thank you.
And we're proud to present this plaque to you.
Oh, thank you.
And we hope you display it proudly.
Oh, we will.
And would you like to say something?
No. Our project started when we getting tired of raccoons and squirrels digging up our front yard. So the most permanent thing we could do is be totally block out all the yard and put in landscaping. And by the time it was done, and they had done such a pretty job, that I guess it was nominated for an award. But thank you very much.
Thank you. And we're down to our last category, is zero-scaping. And I took these pictures, this is someplace in our neighborhood, that the one on the left could almost be my front yard. We're all trying to save water, and we all are getting to someplace around here like that. The one on the right is also in San Bruno down, I forget which street, but this is the zero-scaping, low water use and/or drought-resistant landscaping. And we have several. As I scroll through these, it was extremely tough for the Beautification Task Force members to decide on which ones would get the awards. You can see a wide variety of how people landscape for the low water use and the drought-tolerant landscaping, so it might give you some ideas. Some people who are watching might get some ideas. And that's just some more explanation. So 560 Maple was nominated, and that was a close-up of their yard. 3951 Coronado Way, and they did a slightly different technique, but again, low water use. This one's 122 Elm, and they did all their spots really lovely. 121 Acacia Avenue, again, another type of technique, but also low water use. 356 Chapman Avenue, and more, again, a different technique. 1985 By Glass Drive, 446 Hawthorne Avenue, 2150 Seckliff Way, and again, another technique. And now we come to our winners. Third place winner is 618 Pepper Drive. And, oh, you are here. Excellent. Congratulations. You really did a great job.
We did a great job, and Carol designed it, but if you, you didn't really, maybe on the second picture, I don't know. We have a, nope.
Oh, your waterfall.
We have a waterfall, yeah. So it's, right. But as you notice, if you go up Pepper now, more and more neighbors are changing, oops, changing to this, so it's pretty nice, and we're happy with it.
It's excellent. Thank you again.
Thank you. Great, thanks.
Our second place winner is 114 Acacia, oops, there's Pepper, 114 Acacia Avenue. And you can see, again, a different technique. And that's a close one. So?
Janice Meyer.
Janice Meyer, are you here tonight? Oh.
Yes.
Yay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Happy you could come. Would you like to say something?
No.
He said no, too, but he's talked.
Thanks.
Are you welcome? Thank you. And our first place winner and last thing for tonight is 21, 201, sorry, Castleton Way. And again, slightly different technique. That's why it was so hard to pick, but people did a lovely job.
Smith &amp; Allen.
And the Smith, oh, I even could say that one. The Smith &amp; Allen is here. Yay.
Hi. Thank you so much.
Come on up.
Oh, thank you so much for giving this honor. I've been working for more than 20 years by myself. I still struggling. I try, I wish I could, from this gardening, inspire more neighbors. I've been trying. I still, I will continue my gardening. And I bring my three friends from Millbury and Burlingate and San Bruno. Yeah, I told them.
Well, I'm glad. I'm glad she came to the show, and you were here to see it.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And if you display this, maybe some of your neighbors will get the idea.
Okay. Yeah, I will put it there.
Well, congratulations.
Actually, year 2000, I got one, too.
Yeah, but that was 14 years ago.
I reluctant to put it outside. Okay, now I put the two together.
There you go.
Yeah.
Okay.
But every night, I need to put it back on. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We're very proud to.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
That you have it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our program for this. We hope that has inspired you, and we hope that you encourage your neighbors as you see that other people have. And don't forget, if you want a street tree, let me know. Thank you.
But a special thanks to Irene and all the members of the Beautification Task Force. They've been working on this for many years, as you know, and it's really grown. So congratulations once again, you do a great job. We have a couple more presentations, so hang tight. Our second one is to provide recognition to the Volunteer Planning Committee for the Centennial Community Day in the Park. In celebration of the city's centennial, the city held a Centennial Community Day in the park and carnival on September 27, 2014. The event included children's rides, games, and musical entertainment. It was a special day in city park, and more than 2,000 adults and children enjoyed the activities, the rides, and the entertainment. I want to recognize some of the event sponsors. Artichoke Joe's Casino, Corey Lusej, Dig It All De Nostari and Riddle, Skyline College, C. Kell Smith and Associates, Church of the Highlands, San Bruno Recology, Sky Park Edward Jones, Walmart, San Bruno Lions Club, San Bruno Rotary Club, and especially the Boy Scouts who did the trash pickup all day long. So thank you all. Planning Committee was formed, and a special thanks to Vice Mayor Rico Medina, who headed that planning committee. I know it was a lot of work. With members of the city's Parks and Recreation Commission and community tasked with planning every detail of the event, and members of this planning committee were Laura Davis, Dave Nigel, Greg Pierce, Lori Greenberg, Jamie Monizon, Chris Gonzalez, Kirsten Pinoki, Russ Hanley, Judy Pacini, and Winfried Ju. And I'm going to ask Rico to present some certificates now to those people. It was a lot of work, a lot of work. We're going to have you all come up, if you could, together. Greg? David? Judith? Chris?
I think speaking for the committee, first of all, when I was here at the 75th anniversary as a city employee, I will tell you firsthand, without the parks and the recreation department and staff, a lot of this work and the effort that you saw on the 27th would not be possible. So I think on behalf of the entire committee, we want to acknowledge and thank them for their time and for all the work that they did. But also personally, I want to thank the committee that stands behind me, for we met frequently and more often as it got closer to the event. But you're talking about a group of volunteers from this community who have a lot of heart, passion, and pride in the city that they work and live in. And without the folks behind me, this activity and this event that celebrated San Bruno's 100th anniversary of a community would not be possible. So thank you to the mayor, to the council, and I am indebted to all the work and the effort that you have done and the service that you've provided to this community, and you made this a memorable moment, and we should all be proud of the community that we call home. So thank you very much.
And just because obviously you were helping everybody else that day, so just a little something to remember, San Bruno's history, San Bruno's events.
Thank you.
You gave enough the last couple months, so a little something for you.
Oh, yeah. Thank you so much. I love this stuff.
And again, thank you very much to all of you for all of your work here. I appreciate it greatly. Thank you. Thank you. And just a reminder while we're talking about centennials, we're having our big gala at Skyline College on December 6. You'll be seeing that on our website, so take a look, and hopefully you can participate with us. The last presentation this evening is a present, a proclamation declaring October 1, 2014, as Arbor Day in San Bruno. And I'll read this, it's very brief. Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, reduce heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas this year's observance and celebration features the planting of 100 centennial trees by the Beautification Task Force throughout the San Bruno community, now therefore, I, Jim Ruane, the mayor of the city of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim October 1, 2014, as Arbor Day in the city of San Bruno, and ask all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees, forests, and woodlands, and to support our city's community forest program. So Arbor Day. Am I going to, Renee? Oh, Renee, I'm going to present this to Renee.
I would like to thank the city council for their continued support of Arbor Day and the principles behind it. This year, our Arbor Day celebration included planting 100 street trees to celebrate San Bruno's centennial. I would like to thank the Beautification Task Force for their commitment to planting these trees around San Bruno. Thank you all for your continued support.
Thank you, Renee, for all the work you do and all the work. Before we get into the meat of the agenda, we're just going to take a five-minute break, and there's still a couple of cookies left out there, so please enjoy with us. Evening once again, and we'd like to call the meeting back to order. Item number five is review of the agenda. We'd like to move item 11, which is the annual report of the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, up to right after item number eight, public hearings. No objections. We'll go on to item number six, approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of September 23, 2014, in the Arizona Correction Commission. Seeing them to be approved as submitted. Consent calendar, all items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff.
Move, do you approve?
Second.
Motion in the second, on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item number eight, public hearings. There are no public hearings this evening. We'll go right into item number 11, which is the annual report from the Senior Citizens Advisory Board.
Good evening, mayor and council persons. I've been a long time since I've been here, guys. I'm here today to present the wonderful report that the staff prepared for you. On the front, you'll see the different activities that the senior center offers. The most popular ones are bocce, the nutrition lunch, the exercise classes, the dancing, which is not pictured here, and the pool. The advisory board consists of seven people and myself as an ex-officio member. And they do a wonderful job, and there's a lot of energy in that group. The senior center is very welcoming. We allow anybody to come, and we welcome everybody. And the participation did go up a little bit this year, not significantly, but just a little bit. But we're always open to anybody. And this number is taken by the people who sign in, and I think there's a good 5% or 10% who do not sign in. They don't want their name anyplace. We serve affordable and very nice lunches. We have a great staff, we have a lot of volunteers who help put these lunches together. We served 21,775 lunches last year. That's a lot. We have a bus that picks people up, they take them to and from the center. We had 5,385 people ride the bus last year, but that is lower because the bus was inactive for a number of months. So, we had to work around that. One of my favorite things is the person who sits at the desk and gives referrals. Susan just retired from this job, and Laura has taken it over, and they have marvelous information. Anybody who has, who needs anything for a senior, whether it be the senior themselves or any family member, can call this number, and they will give them help, and they will refer them to everything, from legal people to people who do cleanups for them. So that's a very good and useful tool that we do here. The Nutrition Site Council supports the senior center luncheons by donating annually $100,000. And last year, we also donated the photocopier, the money for the photocopier for this, and it's a wonderful one. It prints in color and fast and quick. And it hasn't jammed up yet, so that's even better. Now, the most popular programs are the bingo, which is 15,347, the aerobic exercises, which is packed when you come into the classroom in the morning, and the pool room, and bocce, and then special events. That's when we honor, like Columbus Day or Mother's Day, Father's Day, we have special presentations at those dinners, those luncheons, rather. And lots of people enjoy that. And we do a lot of dancing at those luncheons. We have 140 volunteers who give almost 18,000 hours, and they help in every different way. They help at the desk, they help in the volunteer of the preparing of the food, they help with all the leagues, the sports leagues that we do, they volunteer at bingo, and they perform, they organize the trips that go to the casinos, which are quite popular. Last year, the senior center replaced the sound system, which is used for bingo, and the classes and special events. They replaced the photocopier, and they provided 500 more meals than the previous year. And some of the goals, a couple of the goals for this year are to establish a subcommittee to work with staff in evaluating the class and program development, and to ensure the maximum member participation and the ability to fill the needs for the community at the time. And the other thing is to continue to explore the potential to install in the lobby here an electronic marquee. Okay, so that's it for me. I've been volunteering here personally for 20 years, and I've enjoyed every minute of it, and I think it's a wonderful group, and I think it serves such a purpose here. We have people who come from as far away as Redwood City and San Francisco, because this is the best senior center on the peninsula. Any questions?
Thank you, Karen.
Don will answer them if you have them.
Any questions? Guys, you're doing a great job.
Yeah.
You drive by here, and it's packed all the time.
All the time.
There's a reason for that, so, wonderful job.
Well, it's so welcoming.
Good, and thank you, thanks you and the advisory board for all the work you do.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number nine, public comment on items not on this agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendaized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council? Just a step to the... Yeah, okay.
Carolyn Livinggood, Cheryl Drive. I just want to comment on the Community Day in the Park. I thought it was excellent. It's unfortunate we can't afford to do it more than 100 years apart. I saw people, myself, that I don't normally see out in the neighborhood. Of course, I live in a little bit of a foggy area, but I, everybody I saw was enjoying themselves. The weather was good, there was good selection of food, I thought the tiles was an excellent idea. I'm anxious to see them up later, but I, for the time all of you spent on it, I think it was more than worthwhile. I think it was a community event that we need more of. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, just tell us your name and your street.
My name is Rich Seguin, I live on Amador, 200 block of Amador. Sorry, going to take a second here.
Speak right into that mic. Thank you.
Approximately two months ago, I called and requested to speak at the city manager's office, and I talked to a lady named Vi, and I related to her the following. El Camino Real, on the cemetery's side, the west side, the entire length of the sidewalk is pretty much covered in weeds. Some you could lose a small dog in. It's not attractive. I explained that to her, and she told me that the sidewalk was not a city responsibility, and it belonged to Caltrans. I know Caltrans owns the street, but, you know, I felt like I got the civil service shuffle, right? Not my responsibility. So, I gave her my name and my phone number, and a lady by the name, I hope, Carrie Burns, Barnes, something close to that, called, and I told her the same story and added the fact that Sneeve up around Sequoia and also going across the freeway also has large clumps of weeds in various locations. I was being jistful when I said it, but I offered to use my weed whacker and do it myself. That's how ugly it is. She told me that she lived in that area, and that she would look at the area on her way home. I thanked her. Two or three weeks later, I called and left a message for Ms. Burns on her phone stating nothing had been done. She did call back, and I repeated the story again, and she said she lived in that area, and she would check it on the way home. I told her, that's the same thing you told me the last time, so I'm guessing nothing was checked. I don't know. Three weeks ago, I called and talked to Ms. Burns, I asked her to call me back, I left a message that nothing had been gun, done, sorry, no phone call back as of right now, and there's a pattern developing here of phone calls not being returned. Two weeks ago, I called the city manager's office again, and I talked to a young lady, I think her name is Jennifer. She was very nice. She told me the city manager was not Deanna, she wanted to know what my concern was. I related the story again, told her I'd use my own weed whacker. She started to laugh, said that's not really necessary. She said she would deliver the message to Ms. Burns, no call back. The pattern continues. I also asked for Mr. Ibarra's extension. I had met Mr. Ibarra before. I left a message with him requesting a call back, and left my phone number. Again, no call back. Yesterday, I went to the city engineer's office, I talked to two ladies, neither of whom knew whether the sidewalk belonged to the city or the state. They were very nice, tried to help, and an engineer, Mr. Dahu, does that sound right? Dehu? I think he was Indian. They asked him, he said the city maintains the sidewalk for Caltrans. I told him the story, he gave me his card, and he called a gentleman by the name of Renee Walsh, who I guess was here earlier. Told him the story over the telephone, asked him to call me, never heard back from him El Camino Real, it's a main traffic thoroughfare through the city. There's no maintenance on that cemetery side. SFO is very close, you get tourists using the shopping centers and the Shell gas station. And worst of all, that cemetery where there's many brave men and veterans buried, it's starting to look like a ghetto. It's really, really ugly. I had a retired two-star general in my car one time, and he looked at it and just went nuts. It's that bad. The city, from people I've talked to, will not and does not get back to people that leave messages with them. I know, I'm not a contractor, believe me, but I know a lot of contractors that have had to deal with the city. Nobody ever gets back to them. So, outside my house, a little sign-in thing, I took three months to get a sidewalk light fixed, one of the light poles. You know, I don't know what image you want to portray of this city, but it's not pretty where you, these main thoroughfares just are not maintained. That's only my opinion, obviously. And if you do decide to trim the weeds, if you find my dog in one of them, would you return him, please? Thank you.
Thank you. As you know, we're not allowed to respond to that directly this evening.
That's fine, sir.
But rest assured, you will get a response shortly.
That's fine, no problem.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Rico?
Robert Rico, you're trustee on the mosquito district. I just wanted to give you a quick update, more to mark your calendars, because I don't have all the details. On Monday, October 27, the Sematell County Mosquito and Vector Control District will hold their public information... hold their public information session. It's basically a yearly meeting that we hold at 7:00 in the San Mateo City Council Chambers at 332 West 20th Avenue in the city of San Mateo. The event is free and open to the public. Participants will have the opportunity to learn more about the threat of West Nile virus in the county and what steps are being taken to protect the residents' health. More importantly, questions will be answered by a panel of expert speakers. We don't have the speakers completely lined up yet. A press release will follow shortly, which I will get to the city clerk and to Miriam on cable so that the information can get out. If you have questions, in the meantime, you can call our new Public Health, Education, and Outreach Officer, Megan Caldwell, C-A-L-D-W-E-L-L, at the district and her phone number is 344-8592 and extension 43. And as I get more information, I will get it to the city.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, please. Just tell us your name and your street.
It's Russell Steins, 851 Reed. I'd just like to ask the council if it's possible if they could amend the 300-foot notification to at least 1,000 feet to notify people when a proposition's coming up. That's it. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, can I say just one more thing? Is that legal?
Go ahead, real quick though.
I live in the 200 block of Amador.
Right into the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. I live in the 200 block of Amador and down the street, which would be the north side, the city just did a huge fixon of the sidewalk, for lack of a better term. But right directly across the street and down maybe 75 feet, there's another gap conservably this big, right? And then also down in Monterey, where there's no streetlights, there's another big gap. So it's just something that needs to be looked at.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Pamela Di Giovanni. Tonight, I'm here on the behalf of Sierra Club Loma Prieta Chapter and we are looking into your housing element. Looking forward to it because San Bruno always does the right thing and we want to let you know that we're here for you, for any of your guidance or would like to work with you in future on affordable housing or anything that you need. And thank you very much for your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll get right into conduct of business. The first item is 10A, adopt a resolution consenting to inclusion of all properties within San Bruno and the California HERO program to finance generation renewable energy resources, energy and water efficiency improvements, and electric vehicle charging infrastructure, and amending the Western Riverside Council of Governments Joint Powers Agreement, adding the city of San Bruno as an associate member of the Joint Powers Authority. Angela?
Oh, there it is. Just want to give you a brief background on the PACE program. State law authorizes a legislative body such as the city council to designate an area in which property owners may enter into a voluntary contractual assessment program in order to finance an array of conservation and renewable energy products. This is known as a property assessed clean energy program or PACE program. PACE programs allow property owners within participating jurisdictions to finance the total cost of installation of energy generation, energy efficiency, and water conservation improvements on their own properties and repay the loans through assessments that are placed on their property tax bills. Participation in this is 100% voluntary for the property owners. Repayment of the loan through the property tax bill is intended to provide the property owner with the flexibility of having the unpaid portion of the loan run with the property in the event it is sold. The new owner would then assume responsibility for the remaining amount to be repaid through the property tax bill, thereby reducing any financial loss if the property is sold while before any energy savings is realized. However, there are some banks that have stated that they are not willing to pay to purchase these mortgages, so the property owner may have to sell or refinance their home or may have to repay the assessment. In 2010, the city of San Bruno adopted a resolution authorizing the city to participate in California First Program, which allowed property owners within the city limits to voluntarily participate in its PACE program. Since that time, additional PACE programs have become available and specifically the California HERO program. There are some advantages of offering multiple PACE programs. Various PACE programs tend to focus on different types of customers. The HERO program focuses the majority on residential. Others may focus more on commercial. Provides property owners with multiple financing options and increased competition could positively impact interest rates. Also, I found out today that in the staff report, we had mentioned that there was a prepayment penalty. This prepayment penalty is only for commercial. It was recently changed, so residential property owners will not have to pay the penalty. For cities, there are some, or for the city itself, there are some advantages. This is an economic development plan that is available to the city at no cost. It promotes a greener environment. It reduces energy consumption, creates sustainable jobs, and lowers greenhouse gas emissions. Just a little additional information, the California HERO program is a financing program only. The city is not responsible for the products, the installation, or their performance. And a few local participants in the HERO program are Menlo Park, Foster City, Redwood City, Daly City, and San Mateo County. That concludes my report. I'm available for any questions. I also have John Law here from the HERO program to answer any specific questions.
Good. Any questions?
Through the chair. I noticed in the staff report that it was adopted in 2010, but it was placed on hold, so this is brand new, if I'm correct. And so I'd like to know, and I asked you before the meeting, if, you know, if we can have some examples, what are we expecting to see if people want to, residents want to get, participate in this? I noticed that it says energy, renewable energy resources, energy and water efficiency improvements, and electrical vehicle charging infrastructure. The first thing that came to my mind is resident wanting to put up a windmill, something. And I mean, obviously there are, you know, that renews energy, but I mean, is that something that, you know, that we want to see cropping up, you know, in our neighborhoods? In addition to photovoltaics and, you know, and the such, so.
I believe there's specific eligible products and...
Just wanted to know what we can expect.
Sure, sure. Hi, I'm John Law. I'm with the HERO program. Work here in Northern California in government relations. Thank you for your interest tonight. There's a number of San Mateo communities that have opted in or about to, so we appreciate your interest. I'll give you some basics on the types of projects we do. About two-thirds of what we do are in the energy efficiency category. So that's water conservation, which might be artificial turf. It might be low-use indoor fixtures. It might be low-use outdoor plumbing and fixtures. It might be hardscape, et cetera. So we're doing a number of water conservation projects. We do a lot of windows and doors that meet the energy efficient requirements. We do quite a bit of roofing that meets the energy efficient standards, as well as heating and air conditioning. Finally, about a third of what we do is solar PV. Now, while the legislation does provide that, some wind turbines could be eligible for the program, HERO requires that all local planning, zoning, permitting processes are adhered to, so I would likely assume that we're not going to see much more than solar popping up where it's allowed in your community. So we've done about 17,500 projects so far in California only. That said, that's about 95% of the nation's financing with this type of work and that equates to over a half a billion dollars in utility savings for the life of these projects. So we're improving the quality of people's residences, the property values, creating some jobs and saving folks quite a bit of money on their utility bills.
Any other questions?
So if I could just follow up?
Yep.
I mean, so I'll look at the website and everything and if adopted, do you have a good marketing program and people will be able to, you know, fairly reasonable application process and such?
Yeah, yeah, so we take pride in a high-quality product and I'll field all the questions that you're willing. So with the population here and with the region just developing, if the city were to adopt tonight, it's going to be a number of months before we go live in the program. It's procedural elements that are required by the legislation. The program takes care of all of it. The city doesn't have to. But what that means is we'll be launching down the road. What that means for the county is many of the cities are coming on board. So I'll give you some San Jose statistics, for example, which launched in July. We have already approved over $20 million in projects for the city of San Jose, just launching in July, and have funded over a million dollars' worth. I have some other data points if you'd like, that we are early on, so some of those ratios as far as a third solar and a third HVAC and that, looks a little different here in Northern California. It's looking like HVAC will be a little bit more of a bigger bucket, but it's early to tell on the data points. What we do is we hire local people that work with contractors every day in the field and work with property owners so that we go to where the business is and we go to where the need is. For example, furnace breaks in December, it's cold here, somebody wants to get warm air right away. We don't interrupt that workflow and we get contractors at the point where they're serving property owners. And we have robust tools that help them give instant approvals or determine that this product, this financing tool won't work for the property owner and they need to find some other way to do the project.
Could I insert here for just a minute and go back to the council member's original question about your example of a windmill? This is a financing program. It is strictly a program that provides an option for residents to secure loans in order to finance improvements that they might want to make. Any and all energy efficiency improvements, just like any other residential improvements, must adhere to the city's planning and zoning building requirements. And so just because a financing program is available doesn't mean somebody can put a windmill in their backyard. My guess is that our zoning and building codes probably would make that very difficult.
Right, and I wouldn't like, I wouldn't assume that people know that they have to comply with that also. Maybe to add on to a room or remodel a kitchen or something, but who knows? You know, maybe they think that because the government's funding something or getting, you know, or helping, that they can just slap a 50-foot windmill up there or something, so. So it's all part of the marketing.
Any other questions?
May I quickly respond to that?
Sure.
So we won't fund without the appropriate permits?
Anyone else have questions? Irene?
I have a couple things. Well, first of all, I was happy to hear that there is no prepayment penalty for residential because I, that bothered me a lot that it might be for, it might apply to people. I'm a little cautious about the interest rate you're charging. Five to seven percent is what is in our staff report and the lowest amount is $5,000. Is that how it works? It just seems a high interest rate and kind of a high bottom $5,000 limit, lower limit.
Okay, well, the interest rates, you know, property assessed clean energy fits between consumer credit where unfortunately most, you know, air conditioning or heating failures, where that gets financed, right? So somebody's furnace goes out in the wintertime, they're using some form of consumer credit to get their warm air by Friday. So that interest rate is here. While folks, some folks may have access to, let's say, a second line of credit on their home or second mortgage or so forth, where that interest rate is here, PACE typically fits in between. So if somebody has access to maybe some other sources of financing, maybe PACE isn't for them. But what we're finding is we're finding rapid adoption with PACE for a number of reasons. An interest rate doesn't, while it's very competitive, isn't the primary driver of why folks are choosing to use PACE. So all else being equal, we expect rates to come down over time as the securitization of these bonds, which we've successfully accomplished, becomes more commonplace. We see the cost coming down, but we're seeing property owners automatically choose the longest term, which doesn't mean the lowest rate. What property owners like is easy to do business with. We answer 40,000 phone calls a month. Contractors can use this tool without interrupting the workflow. They have tax deductible capabilities with PACE that they don't have with consumer credit. So the effective rate is much lower. Additionally, if the lender permits at time of sale, that assessment, as well as the permanent improvement and the utility savings, stay with the property. So a lot of those reasons may be attractive for some folks.
Okay, so if I may. So let me get this straight.
Yes.
So the people want to put solar on their roof or put a new roof and then put solar?
Yes.
So they come to you and you get the contractor or...
Yeah, so no, we're a financing mechanism and we have an infrastructure that helps make this process smooth and easy. We're not a contractor. So we work with your local contracting community to help them bring this tool to their business. What property owners typically do, and in almost all cases for us, they have a job that they want to do, whether that's because something failed or it's because discretionary, let's say, like solar. They find the job, they select their contractor, then they think about the financing. That's where we fit in and we work mostly with contractors as being one of their financing choices. But they have to be certified, they have to adhere to a code of conduct. We do a lot of things and formalize consumer protection, but if they come to us directly, we're going to recommend that they find a contractor that works with HERO and it's, and we make it easy for contractors to participate, but they do have to get certified.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Rico? Okay. Any more discussion or action by the council?
Through the chair, I'll introduce a resolution.
Councilmember Iber.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruweng.
Aye. Item 10B, receive report to provide comment on the housing opportunity sites, programs, and implementation actions for the draft housing element 2014 to 2022 and authorize
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. The purpose of this item tonight is to review the draft housing element for 2014 to 2022 and receive comments from the city council. As you know, we've been working on the housing element update for a number of months and we have produced, or we have, we have been specifically working on recently the housing element programs and also the inventory of available housing sites. As you know, state law requires that the housing element be updated every five years and it, and I'd also like to point out that it's staff's intent to treat this item somewhat like a study session and we welcome any comments or questions during the presentation, so feel free to interrupt if you, if you have any questions or comments. The housing element provides a tool to promote housing development to meet the housing needs of people of all incomes. And the staff report focuses on two areas, that really the meat of the housing element. And these two components are the inventory of available housing sites with capacity to meet the regional housing needs allocation, which we've gone over many times before and that's the city's obligation over the next eight years for the, for housing units that we need to provide sites for. And secondly, to review programs to facilitate meeting that RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation requirement, and especially with regard to affordable units. First, I'd like to review what we've done or what the city has done over the last housing element cycle, which is, we're just ending right now. That was from 2007 to 2014. And our RENA, or Regional Housing Needs Allocation, for that period was 973 total units. And as you can see, there's also a breakdown by affordability levels, 222 low, very low-income, 222 low, very low income, 160 low income, 188 moderate, and 403 above moderate. And we showed in our last housing element that we had sites to accommodate housing units at those income levels. But what actually happened was 772 units were produced, which is a lot of units, and there were not so many very low and low units. In fact, there were no very low units and just a few low income units. The rest were split between moderate and above moderate, mostly at the Crossing, the SNK project at the Crossing, Pacific Bay Vista's, Marimont, and Skycrest. So those were, those were all in the higher ranges. And it was also a time when we lost redevelopment and other tools to promote affordable housing. So that was the result of the last housing element. Our new RENA obligation, which has been adopted, is for a total of 1,155 units, and those are split, again, between amongst very low, low, moderate, and above moderate. As you can see, there's 358 very low, 161 low, 205 moderate, and 431 above moderate. So the city needs to show that it has sufficient sites to accommodate these units. And in the table that is in your staff report that shows a listing of the housing opportunity sites, basically I'll break it down into two categories. And the first category are sites that are already zoned residential, sites where you could, you could build housing today, you could apply, you could submit an application, build housing now. And that would accommodate about 738 units. And for the most part, these are carryover from what was included in the last housing element. That leaves us short of the 1,155. So staff looked at available sites and basically what has been contemplated in both the general plan and the transit corridors plan. And we identified 974, or sites that would accommodate 974 units. And those sites need to be rezoned in order to meet that RENA requirement. And that rezoning would actually be, make the zoning consistent with our adopted general plan and transit corridors plan. So it's not really anything new. We're not looking at any new sites which the city hasn't considered previously for And this map just shows the sites that are already zoned for housing and those that need rezoning. And it's just to point out that the majority of sites that need rezoning are in the transit corridors plan area or around there. So they're in areas that are now zoned, generally zoned commercial. And the rezoning would allow mixed use.
To the chair, that's just what I wanted to check, is that we're talking about single family neighborhoods staying the same and focusing on the increase on the commercial corridors? Is that correct?
That's correct. These sites are, they're either in commercial corridors or they are vacant school sites where housing would be allowed if, you know, was decided to reuse those sites as housing. And for example, we recently had a interest from Skyline College for teacher housing and single-family housing in the Skyline College area on the Skyline College property. But yes, this does not touch single-family neighborhoods. All right, well, so since we identified the housing sites, in addition to having housing sites, you need to have, you need to be sure that those sites will actually, are actually available to accommodate the housing. And not just the total amount of housing, but also the housing for special needs groups, very, very low, low, moderate, even extremely low income households. So that's really, the purpose of the programs is largely to put programs, policies, implementation actions in place to encourage development of housing to meet the needs of all income groups and people from all parts of the community. So most of these programs are ongoing. They're, the majority, there are 52 programs in the previous housing element, and there were a few that were eliminated. They were eliminated because they generally had, were focused on redevelopment, like the redevelopment 15% requirement and so forth, which is now gone. So those programs were removed. And many, many of those other programs are carried forward unchanged. However, there is an ongoing process of evaluating housing element programs, which we do through our annual progress report, which we submit to the California Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD. And we present, we provide that to you every year. So there's really an ongoing sort of evaluation and of what's working, what isn't working. And then at the, at the end of the housing element cycle, which is where we are now, there's a, there's actually an exercise in which you go through a similar evaluation that you do on an annual basis, but you specifically look at it in terms of what works, what doesn't work, what needs to be changed, you know, what should stay the same, what should be eliminated. And so staff has gone through that exercise. And basically, the feedback that we've gotten is through, we've had meetings with the Planning Commission, we've had meetings with you, with the City Council, we've worked with the countywide Regional Housing Element Update Group, which is 21 elements. We've met with housing organizations, affordable housing developers, social service advocate, not advocates, but social services, service organizations. And staff has reviewed the, reviewed programs and suggested some changes. And that's what I, what I want to focus on in going over the program. So there's, there's basically eight programs that are changing or we're suggesting should change, and two new programs. So I will first, I'll start with the goals, the housing, each, all of the programs are under specific goals that are required by state law. So there, there are essentially six goals of the housing element. And as you'll see, most of them have to do with providing housing for lower income and special needs groups. So the first is to protect neighborhoods through conservation, rehabilitation, and improvement of existing housing. The second is to accommodate the regional housing needs allocation. The third is to expand construction financing techniques to achieve affordable housing. Fourth is to achieve energy and environmental conservation in residential design while maintaining affordability of housing. The fifth is to ensure continued availability of affordable housing for very low, low, and moderate income households. And the sixth is to support the needs of people with extremely low incomes. So that's, those are sort of the headings for all of the programs. And this slide shows the, just the titles of the eight programs that staff is suggesting to update or change. And the first one is support infrastructure upgrades. Who can, who can object to that? But this really, what this has to do is the Transit Corridors Plan and implementation of the Transit Corridors Plan. So what, the additional piece is to formulate a development impact fee to finance the upgrade and maintenance of infrastructure related to new residential and commercial development in the Transit Corridors Plan area. So that's, that is the, that's the first proposed change. I'd ask if you have any, any thoughts or comment on that, that item. The second is to facilitate legalization of second units. I think that you're aware that excess housekeeping units are units that were in place from, before 1977, and there's a process to legalize those units. There is also a second unit ordinance, which allows new second units and units starting basically in 2003 to be approved through the normal planning process. That leaves a gap between 1977 and 2003, which is 20, 26-year gap, where there's basically no avenue for a household or homeowner to legalize a unit that was installed during that period. And so what this program does is it basically is set up a process to consider how we might create a legal process to legitimize some of those units.
How to legalize the illegal units?
Well, I mean, is an excess housekeeping unit illegal? That's, you know, that's a question, and there are, there are also amnesty programs. And, you know, you would have to develop criteria for, you know, what the city would be willing to, to accept. For example, with excess housekeeping units, the units have to have been shown, proved to have been built at a certain time, and also meet the building codes at the time that they were built.
I think it's, it's a real sensitive subject. You know, NIMBYism and things, but it's my understanding that, you know, the problem with the second unit ordinance is, is parking. You know, it's, parking's bad enough, and then now if you're legalizing, you know, additional living units, it just exacerbates the problem. So that's, that's gonna be, that's gonna be a tough one.
I agree, that's, it's a, it's a very thorny issue. David, you have a thought on that?
I think in general, as you look at these proposed programs, it's important to realize that the idea is the programs would come forward for further research, discussion, and consideration by the city. So at this point in time, this is an idea, a concept for future consideration in terms of trying to provide more affordable housing units. Would we want to look at, consider the possible legalization of these second units? So you're not making a decision on the topic at this time, only to consider at a future date, this, this sort of opportunity for additional affordable units here in San Bruno.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm, I'd like to interrupt you here because, I mean, I read through this and I'm sure 99% of us don't understand a lot of the purpose of a housing element. And the more and more I try to understand it, it is, it's mandated, but it's, it's full of goals. And you showed us what our last seven years produced, what this, we set a goal and we didn't reach any of it. I mean, we exceeded where we knew, you know, where I'm sure everyone exceeds, but when you, you know, when you set a goal for very low income housing and you don't produce any, you know, what, you know, what's the accountability here? And so now you're saying that, you know, we have these programs and things that, are we just trying to show the state that we can implement this, but we're not really gonna implement it? Or we're really not, you know, we're, we're really not intending to, you know, to gain housing with these programs? Because, you know, seven, eight years from now, what happens when we come up short? I mean, you're showing 178 very low income, a goal of 178 very low income. That's, I mean, based on our track record, it ain't gonna happen. So I'm just trying to get a feel for what are we actually trying to achieve or are we just trying to pacify the state? You know, with a, you know, with a detailed goal and, you know, and housing element.
Councilmember Abara, the objective here is to put in place programs that could generate housing units to meet the various goals. So the idea really is, as we look at these proposed programs, for example, this one here, it is an area of discussion in terms of legalizing second units that were put in place in the past, but it could be an opportunity where we could achieve some low or very low income units. As you pointed out, during this current cycle, we produced very little, almost, almost no very low or extremely low units, extremely low number of those units. So we need to look at programs where we could potentially achieve these goals. This may be one. There are some communities where they are looking at legalizing, but they're also doing it in a way where they're looking at what are the community concerns? How can we address those community concerns or neighborhood concerns? And at the same time, find middle ground to create more affordable housing units in our neighborhoods. So our objective is to, is to try to find real programs that could be implemented here in San Bruno to provide housing for all economic segments, including the extremely low and low income segments. That's our objective.
Through the chair. Let me see if I can say this correctly. There are illegal second unit dwellings out there that are occupied, and they already have, they already create the parking problems. It's not, it's not that we're going to say, let's see, these things already exist. We just can't count them because they're not legal and we don't know about them. So we can't count them toward our housing units. I mean, that's part of the problem. They're there, they cause parking problems. We all know about somebody who has, you know, lives in a garage someplace or lives in the, in the illegal housing, you know, in-law unit or something like that, especially if it was built between 1977 and 2003. I mean, they're there, but we can't count them. So that's part of the solution to this. We're not creating new units that were already built in these years. And the second piece is there are units that are illegal that aren't being used, so then we have to look at that. And then third, new units that could be built. So it's, we're, we need to kind of be clear on how we're attacking this problem. So I'm glad you said that this is, these are possibilities, that we're gonna come back and look at them, but that's, that's what we're doing. So thank you.
Through the chair. Going back to Councilman Ibera, I mean, it is opening the door because you're bringing it up for discussion and consideration. There are parking impacts to neighborhoods. Yes, they may exist, but it doesn't, you know, I guess you can go back as you're trying, you're trying to achieve a number. I think that's great, but in the bigger good of it, is that the right course? Is that the way we're going to achieve our goal? And is it a realistic goal? And if that doesn't pan out, what is our alternative? What's our backup plan? So, so to me, I understand putting things on the table and trying to see what you could put in a toolbox, nothing wrong with that. But at the same time, there's a lot of other facets that actually apply to this. And I think it does open the door to a lot of other, other things that have been discussed a little bit up here.
Yeah, I think another way to look at it is, you know, previously in the last housing element, when we had redevelopment and before the Palmer Court decision, we had tools to create or to require affordable housing, and we did. I mean, and the previous achievements were really great because we exceeded, not only exceeded the total number, but we exceeded the affordability numbers. Unfortunately, that was not, not possible. And I think also that the state's intent is not to force communities to create, you know, 300 and know, 360 very-low-income units and 180 low. It is to make sure that you zone to have the capacity to do it. And some of the criteria for determining what could be affordable is, rightly or wrongly, is density, for instance. There's the assumption that if you have a higher-density site, that you're more likely to be able to provide affordable housing on that site than if you have a single-family site. So, these are the types of, sort of, the guidance that the state is giving, but they're not, I mean, it would be impossible. It's the private sector that, you know, comes forward with projects and builds housing. I mean, I feel like it's our role to try to guide it and to put policies and measures in place.
And I agree with that. And I'm not attacking the whole, and it's unusual that you set goals over an eight-year period, seven, eight-year period, and if you don't achieve it, oh, well. You know, then you renew it, and you're compounding things by throwing out numbers that you weren't able to achieve before. I like all the programs. I mean, I know the second units is a very touchy subject in a bedroom community like this. But I'm also in favor of the Transit Corridors Plan where we're going to create new opportunities for housing. So, that and the possibility of condo conversions and also, you know, other sites that were, you know, formerly schools, whatever. But that's another controversy in itself.
Yeah. Thank you.
And again, as Vice Mayor Medina indicated, we're looking at a broad range of programs. I think there are about 50 or so programs in the overall implementation program that's before you this evening. So, it's a broad-based tool belt.
So, I think the next program is probably less controversial, and it's just updating the zoning code so that we, you know, have the number of housing sites that we need to meet the RENA. So, that's Program 2A. And the fourth one, implementation of the Transit Corridors Plan, and that is a program that is intended to make sure that as the Transit Corridors Plan moves forward, that things are planned properly. For example, we previously talked about the impact fee. But just what is the implementation program? What is the sequence of actions? There's actually an action, an implementation program within the Transit Corridors Plan, which is quite lengthy, but it has to be carried out. So, the thought was that we would, working with the council and an advisory group of possibly of department heads or, you know, staff, start to map out just what needs to be done to make sure that the Transit Corridors Plan unfolds in a rational manner. And the next item is, you know, it's very similar. We adopted the residential design guidelines, you know, back in, I think it was 2009. And now with the Transit Corridors Plan, we have design guidelines for El Camino and San Bruno and the downtown. So, this is really, you know, another implementation measure to make sure that all projects meet the design guidelines of the Transit Corridors Plan. And the next program is regarding affordable housing strategies. And that program is, as you know, we have a considerable amount of money in the Low Market Rate Housing in Lufi Fund, which is sort of waiting for a project. And so, this program is really to decide how to prioritize that money and how to plan for what type of project that would produce affordable housing. You know, just, you know, how would that take place? Would it be, you know, an RFP to affordable housing developers? It would just be working out how we would go about that. Condominium conversions, that's another fairly controversial issue, I think. Because what that really is suggesting is, when a rental project converts to for-sale condominiums, is to treat it like new for-sale housing and making it subject to our below-market-rate housing program, which requires 15% of the units be affordable to low- and moderate-income households.
Have you picked out any, I mean, have you searched out any potential, you know, projects for that? Because condo conversions would be existing rental units, right? Multi-residential rental units. Do we have an idea of how many might be, you know, potential candidates?
Well, you know, a number, I mean, often when a developer builds a rental project, often an exit strategy is conversion to condo. So, and, you know, we have more of those projects now at the crossing, and we'll probably have more. So, you know, I had not identified any particular project, but that could happen in, you know.
You know, if I could, on that, what we find in some cases is that with a new project to circumvent our inclusionary requirement, a developer will propose a rental project instead of a for-sale project, but they'll go ahead and map it. They'll record a condominium map on it. So, this may be an opportunity that when they go forward and actually use that property as a condominium, there would be an opportunity for the city at that time to trigger the affordable requirement, whether it's in Lufi or inclusionary units.
So, now I'll move on to the, oh, did I? I missed the emergency shelter. Sorry. Emergency shelter zoning, and that's something we all know about. It's something that we're working on, and we hope to be working with you on this, identifying, reviewing the location for emergency shelter in the next month or so. And so, this program actually could sort of go away if we get it done before the housing element is adopted. Then there are two new programs, and the first one is an affordable housing impact fee. And that program is an impact fee that would be imposed on new housing development. And the logic behind it is that the creation of market-rate housing creates a need for affordable housing. Because as you build market-rate housing, more services and so forth are required by the residents of the new housing. And the city of San Bruno currently is participating in a countywide nexus study, which is studying that nexus between the building of market-rate housing and the need for affordable housing. And that study is being, it's being done county-wide, but it's also being tailored to each community. So, the comparables and the sort of background material and so forth are customized for each community. And included in that study is what's called a commercial linkage fee. And the commercial linkage fee is a fee on new office development that would be used for affordable housing. And the logic there is that, you know, creating new office development also creates a need for affordable housing. And so, what will happen in this study is that a range of what would be reasonable fees will be presented, and we will bring them to you to, you know, to review. And often, communities choose a range. I mean, often they won't go to the max. They'll go somewhere, you know, for various reasons, you know, a lower than the maximum fee. But in any case, that affordable housing impact fee is being worked on right now. And then the next program, which is the Affordable Housing Strategies, and I apologize because in your staff report, it mentions the Affordable Housing Impact Fee and the Commercial Linkage Fee within this Affordable Housing Strategies program. So, I can see how you'd be confused or think that, you know, there's no difference between the two, but there actually is. And so, this program is really to explore a range of housing programs that are considered by the housing community to be best practices for producing affordable housing. So, rather than create, you know, a new program for each one, this would be an opportunity to, perhaps in study sessions, to review and discuss possible other affordable housing programs. And these include such things as rent stabilization, another very controversial topic, just cause eviction for rental projects, and partnering with employers to fund and assist in facilitating affordable housing, and also potentially looking at a voluntary set aside of 20% from the redevelopment boomerang funds. So, that's really looking at a range of different options and considering pursuing them further. And could you go to the next one? Yeah. So, in terms of, you know, what we have to do, what's discretionary, what's not discretionary, really rezoning is not really, we have to do that not only because of this, but for a number of other reasons. And so, that's the one that is required. And the other programs are essentially discretionary. However, in reviewing the housing element, HCD needs to see that the city is committed and, you know, demonstrates that it's promoting affordable housing for all income levels and all income groups. So, to the extent we can demonstrate that, I think that helps us with our case for an approved and certified housing element. And then finally, for next steps, our plan is to complete the draft housing element, including city council comments today, and to submit the draft housing element to HCD for an initial review in October, November. And we would submit the draft housing element with HCD comments back to you and to the Planning Commission for consideration of approval in December or January. And our objective is to submit it back to HCD for certification by the end of January. That concludes my presentation.
If I could just ask, you know, a simple question on the allocation. It's all a formula to come up with those numbers?
The regional housing needs allocation?
Yeah.
It is a formula?
Because I'm bringing back to, you know, this somewhat lofty goal of extremely low and very low, you know, units, you know, in the next eight years.
It is a formula. However, there's a little bit of difference in San Mateo County because with CCAG and 21 Elements, all of the cities in the county and the county itself got together to determine our own RENA distribution. We got the, you know, the big number for the county from ABAG, and then it was distributed locally. And I have to say that it's very similar to what we would have gotten from ABAG, but there were adjustments that could be made based on local conditions.
I think what you're doing is difficult. I was involved with the very first RENA action through CCAG, and it's not easy. There's what we want to do, what we should do, what developers will do, what the market will bear, et cetera, and the state is telling us what we have to do. So, none of this is easy. There's a lot of controversy, and I think you've done a good job to start out and outline what we need to look at. And I don't have any specific, particular questions beyond that.
Okay. Any comments? This evening, we're just looking for your comments, and we received just a few from you. If you have any additional comments, we welcome them, and we would take your comments and incorporate them into the draft we're going to submit to HCD. And we anticipate doing that, as Mark said, later on this month or early November, and this will come back to you.
If I could, I'll comment. I'll comment on this housing impact fee. You're talking about who is that going to come from? If you're going to start, I can understand the impact fees for new commercial development, but is that something we adopt by ordinance and then, you know, implement? And how are the other communities doing it? And so, what I don't want is, you know, is to put a roadblock in developing in our community, you know, where, you know, don't go to San Bruno, they got impact fees.
Yeah. Yes, we would have to adopt it. And I think the purpose of it and the reason that communities are doing it in the first place is because of the Palmer decision, which basically, you know, invalidates one-half of our below-market-rate housing fee and program. So, the inclusionary BMR program does not apply to rental housing now. So, this would essentially replace that for rental housing.
A lot of work, pretty aggressive, but we've got to get it done. Thank you. Item 10C, receive report and provide direction to staff regarding consideration of a resolution, repealing Resolution 1986-64. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I was hoping to speak on that last item.
Please, go right ahead.
I'm Diana Reddy. I'm a community builder with Housing Leadership Council, and I'm personally a resident of Redwood City, but I have been talking with San Bruno residents and business owners about housing issues, and I just wanted to pass on some of those conversations to you. First of all, San Bruno really stands up, and the housing community thanks you for that. And staff did an amazing job with the housing element and coming up with proposals And staff did an amazing job with this, with the housing element, and coming up with proposals for, because of the loss of redevelopment and other things, we, all of our cities are really having a tough time. And so I really commend your staff for coming up with these innovative ideas with, or replacing some of those things that we've lost. And also, congratulations on your Measure N and other opportunities to create density and your economic development here in San Bruno. Just one caution, that economic development and adding more development in the downtown may cause displacement. You have many of your, currently low-income housing is in the downtown area, and some of our cities have been experiencing displacement already. My own daughter-in-law is a teacher at your Rollingwood. She just moved to Rollingwood this last year, and I have to always look it up. She's at Rollingwood, and she was upset this last summer because several of her families were being displaced, and she was losing some of her favorite students. And the adding of affordable housing doesn't really protect our low-income families from those skyrocketing rents that they're already experiencing. And I just wanted to let you know that those of us in the housing community in San Mateo County are talking with the county and cities about protections for renters. And many of our renters are reporting to us that they're paying $2,000 and more for apartments that are barely meeting health and safety standards. And we need to do something about that to protect them. And so I just wanted to let you know, it's not in your housing element to do that, but the state not only expects us as jurisdictions to provide affordable housing, but to protect the naturally affordable housing that already exists. And in many of our cities, our developments were built in the 60s and 70s, and they don't truly warrant a rent of $2,000. So I'm hoping that we can come back to you in the next couple of months to talk about things that we might do to protect renters from these skyrocketing rents. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10C, receive report and provide direction to staff regarding consideration of a resolution, repealing Resolution 1986-64 in directing implementation of a modified policy for inspection, maintenance, and replacement of private sewer laterals.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of council. Jim Birch, Deputy Director of Maintenance and Operations, and sharing this presentation tonight with me is Dennis Bosch, who's our Wastewater Services Manager. We're here tonight to provide you with additional information and updates related to our private sewer lateral policy. We're going to explain a little bit of the warranty program information and public outreach plans that we have for sewer laterals. In June, the council provided direction to staff on three items related to sewer laterals. One was to pursue a modification to the current lateral policy. The second was to return to council with recommendations and plans for public outreach. And the third was to investigate a partnership with Sewer Lateral Warranty Company. A little bit of background, in June, we also met with the Infrastructure Subcommittee, and shortly afterward, with the full council, where we discussed the rising costs and unsustainable nature of our current sewer lateral policy and practices. Staff provided a report at that time, which presented several alternatives for council consideration to address rising costs and to better meet regulatory and baykeeper requirements. In addition, information was also provided, I said, about the warranty coverage for sewer laterals. Tonight, we'll provide a little bit more background related to laterals. Dennis is going to take that part of it and explain what we currently do with the laterals, how many there are and that sort of thing. We'll also provide you the update for the warranty program information. We investigated after the last meeting in June. And we'll also detail our public outreach efforts related to laterals, and in particular, the point-of-sale ordinance, which was adopted by council in January and is set to take effect in May of 2015. And all those are related to sewer laterals. And I thought it would be good to briefly go over, we talk about laterals and cleanouts a lot, but I, we came up with this graphic, and as we discussed previously, the current policy provides that if a cleanout has been installed, city staff will maintain what is called lower lateral, which is in the picture, or in the graphic, is considered that, that part of the lateral that's from the cleanout to the sewer main. In other words, the current practice is that once homeowners experience problems with their lateral, they can simply install a, an improved cleanout, and then contact the city to repair or replace that lower portion of the lateral. This is where I hand it over to Dennis.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. So some facts around sewer laterals. There's approximately 11,000 citywide, so one pipe for mostly one property. Approximately 20 to 25% we believe of homes have a cleanout, so roughly 2,700, some form of a cleanout, whether it's been an installed one or one that's, was put in years ago, or sometimes we call a T-connection, but some form of a cleanout. 119, or about 1%, are maintained by city staff at approximately $35,000 a year. And what I mean by maintained is, through our CMMS system, we have set up a programmable preventative maintenance program, where we go out and our staff cleans the lateral, or mostly removes roots, three months, six months, and 12-month intervals. I say roots because that's what we can do. Sometimes when we go ahead and do a video, if it's a structural defect, or if it's an offset, for the most part, it's going to cause a backup or already has. So therefore, once a cleanout, a specified cleanout meeting our city spec, we then take jurisdictional responsibility of that lower lateral, as Jim has just alluded to, and then we make usually the repair. Most of those sewer laterals that we uncover, either it was old construction standards, it was a bell and spigot, and then they slopped some mortar around it, a lot of that has deteriorated. For the ones that we can't maintenance, we're on course for about 60 to 70 repairs a year, and it's projected to be almost around $500,000. In 2006, we started aggressively trying to fix them. It also was at the same time the WDR was ramping up in 2007, which said that we are responsible for SSOs from lower laterals, or at least the pipes that are considered part of our system. So we started ramping it up, and our land item at that time was $30,000 for repairs, and now we're up to 400 to 450,000. Per our consent decree with baykeepers, we need to reduce SSOs and have no more than three a year by 2019. Historically, approximately 90% of SSOs or sanitary sewer overflows are caused by laterals, whether it be a privately-owned lateral, a lateral with a cleanout, or just problems from them. Just to let you know, we're around six SSOs that we're responsible for this year, so we're getting there. However, the reason why we're down so much on that is because we have so aggressively attacked, put money towards, and repaired a high number of those lower laterals. On the next, on the next slide is our map, and you can see, if you can't see, it's broken down into neighborhoods of where basically developments were constructed. In the red area says 1920s, other areas 1940s, and the yellow, and then so on. Most of the lateral repairs that we've done are east of Highway 280, which is in the more older part of town. However, we have done lateral repairs to west of 280, and just due to Orangeburg Pipe that was a material made after the war, a lot of that was installed in the 1950s and 1960s area. And through, through video inspection by our own crews, we've found locations that are, that are starting to crush from that. And I'll give it back to Jim.
So there's several factors that impact the costs, and we've talked about several of those in prior meetings. One of the associated, one of the costs that's going to drive, or part of the driver for this graph is a point-of-sale ordinance. The point-of-sale ordinance, just as a reminder, is only for residential property built before 1960, and it was passed by the council in January, take effect in May 2015. It was required as part of the baykeeper consent decree, and again, it was approved by council. And it will impact about 300 homes per year. What that will do for us under the current policy for sewer laterals is, when people go to buy a home, they will be forced to, if it's built before 1960, to make sure that the sewer lateral is in good repair and get a certificate of inspection. Thank you. And when they find a problem, if they don't already have a cleanout, they can install a cleanout at, on their side of the property line, and then call the city and ask for repairs to be done. What Dennis didn't tell you is, we used to do about 10 to 15 repairs, lateral repairs a year, and that's gone up drastically. We're, we've already done 60 this year, and we're only halfway through the year. So the costs have gone way up, and we think that in part, people have found out about the policy and are taking advantage of it. Also, the age of the laterals, as Dennis mentioned, is contributing to, you know, just things wear out over time, and it's kind of getting at a more rapid rate. When we add in the point-of-sale ordinance and the impacts from the point-of-sale ordinance, it's going to have a huge impact, and we don't really know for sure the numbers, but we know it will have a big impact. We think about 20 to 25% of the homes that are sold will probably have some issues. How many of those people will call the city to get the repairs done? We don't know. They may work it out between the buyer and the seller to get it done with a contractor and not involve the city, we're not sure. I mentioned public outreach, we'll talk about that in a little bit. Also, in our report last time in June, we talked about the Sharp Park Lateral Grant Program, and I have that in here just to explain that we do have a grant program for sewer lateral replacements in the city, but it's only for a specific area. Again, it's required as part of the baykeeper consent decree, obviously not available for citizens outside Sharp Park. We did contact baykeeper to find out, could we expand the program citywide? And we've asked for some interpretation on what we could do, and so we made an effort, and that was not approved. That program offers a 50% reimbursement up to $1,700. We have reached out to the Sharp Park area, and I know that Vice Mayor Medina was at a meeting we had in, I think, May for the Sharp Park area. We went door-to-door, our crews went door-to-door to notify the folks there about the program and make an outreach to them. We've been mildly successful in the very short term, at least getting interest, but we've only had one lateral replaced since that meeting. We've had about six or seven that got their lines videotaped, and we offer half of the cost for that, up to $75. So again, it wasn't, it wasn't as successful as we'd like for it to be.
Can you, can you mention roughly, how much, do we know how much the repair costs were for those that did not, either did not, you know, take advantage of the program, or maybe asked about the program?
How many people asked about it?
How much was the repairs? How much, you know?
How much does it cost? Oh, so the average cost is anywhere between about $4,000 and $8,000.
Right.
If you, I sort of cringed when the beautification committee had all these pictures of these wonderful homes, and I see this brickwork, and I'm thinking, gosh, I hope their lateral's okay. Because those are the things that Dennis and I both think about when we see people that spend a lot of money on their property. We think, you know, I sure hope that they have a good, a good lateral. And in talking about good laterals, we, at the last meeting, we explained that we had reached out to a couple of warranty companies, and so this slide here is the results of that. We've gone through and researched a company, this company is called Utility Service Partners, that we've reached, that we've talked to about their program. We think their program's the best, it's the one that Daily City uses. It costs $9 a month, they cover up to $8,000 per occurrence. They have a 24-hour toll-free hotline, they actually, someone answers the phone, it's not a, you know, a recorded message. They have a 30-day waiting period, and they would only market twice a year, spring and fall, and it would be materials that the city manager and others would have a say on. They don't mass market, they don't direct mail, they go through, they would go through the city to get that material approved beforehand. It's endorsed by the National League of Cities, and they have a current partnership agreement with Daily City. And actually, one of our crew members got their letter with the City of Daily City's logo on it, and a little three-paragraph blurb about the program, and a little tear-off thing that you could sign up for the program, you can pay a year in advance and so forth. The other thing that this company does is they partner with local contractors, and they work out agreements on prices with local contractors. So you have local people working on, you know, the local issues. So the other part of the...
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Just back on that, have you reached out to the City of Daily City to see and ask how they have found that service and how the residents feel?
I have, and they've, they've expressed to me not only what they do for their policy, because that was one of the key things, is what do they do with their current sewer lateral policy, and how does it tie into this warranty program? But they have expressed that they're, the people that have obviously taken advantage of it are very happy with it. I know Dennis's mother has a program in South City and had the sewer line repaired. He didn't even know she had the program, but a considerable amount of work, the whole entire sewer line done, and it turns out, his mother's smarter than maybe he might be.
Extremely happy. She lives in South City, and they have a different company, but a similar, similar program. And I received a call from my father, and he said, you have to do something, and my mother called me back and said, don't worry about it, I've been paying my $9 a month. And a local plumber came out, she called. They facilitated the plumber coming out, and within a good amount, a fair amount of time, they had replaced and installed two cleanouts, one by the property one at the curb line. And for my mother's 120 per se dollars a year, I would probably say, I haven't seen the bill, but upwards, probably around $8,000. And that's from the house to the property line, not necessarily out from the property line to the street. So she's extremely happy.
So this company in particular has, they sort of break it up, they have $4,000 up until you get into the street, what they call "street cutting." If you need to do street cutting, then that, they give another $4,000. So that's how they break up their cost piece. So we're really happy with what they provided us, they provided us with samples of marketing materials and so forth, so at the, at the end of the presentation, we'll be asking for some direction regarding that. And again, we've committed to the council that we would provide public outreach, in particular for the point-of-sale back in January. We've formulated our plan based on, you know, during the summer's probably not a good time with all the activities, we've targeted fall and winter for some public outreach, and we have planned to do more than one public informational meeting, meet with the realtors, meet here at the senior center, and have cable TV televise the meeting so that we can play it, link to it from the website and so forth. We also are going to develop brochures and handouts so that we can have them at our points of customer contact, obviously to hand out at the meetings, and also to have for our field staff. So when customers have questions about sewer laterals or point-of-sale or any of those things, we can have information right there. They're very knowledgeable anyway, but to have something to leave with that customer is important to us. And again, have that material on the website and involved on the cable TV as well. And in order to address regulatory requirements and increasing costs, which have created unsustainable situations, staff recommends that council repeal the current Resolution At the next council meeting, staff would be able to, if so directed, bring forward a resolution that would make homeowners responsible for the maintenance and repair of their laterals regardless of the cleanout status. In addition, staff recommends that any change to the current policy take effect no earlier than January 15th to allow for robust public information education campaign, as we've described. In addition, staff recommends that council direct staff to bring to council a resolution that would authorize the city manager to enter into a partnership agreement with Utility Service Partners, which offers lateral warranty coverage. We're asking for city council's direction tonight on these items. We're asking for city council's direction tonight on these items. This completes our presentation and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Just really quick before the council, when we talked about the information and the handouts, is any of that going to be bilingual or?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Just wanted to check. It's fresh memory.
Anything else while you have the mic? Ken? Anything? Okay. Irene?
I appreciate all the work you've done and all the planning. And I think you have captured the difficulties that we're looking forward to and the fact that it's just very expensive. I was sitting here trying to do the math. If we had, if we charged the 11,000 people, how much it would cost per year to do the laterals? It comes out roughly $40,000 a residence for each 11,000 persons. So, or 11,000 households. It's just not sustainable. We can't, we just cannot do it along with all the other capital improvements that we need to do. So, I for one, think you've done a very thorough job. I think it just has to be done. I don't know how else we could do it, so.
Thank you. We didn't cover it too much tonight. Dennis talked about the SSOs, but that's one of the concerns that we have is when there is an SSO with a lateral, we, it counts against the city. Another bit of information that sometimes people misunderstand, and that is, even though there's 11,000 laterals, we currently only care for or maintain 1% of those laterals. And that's 119 because they have root issues. Where we find breakages and they have a cleanout, a lot of times, people will install that cleanout and call the city. And Dennis has just been deluged recently. We then go and repair those. But that's a small number compared to the 11,000. But that number will grow and grow and grow and that's the concern and that's why we're here.
I think the key word here is sustainability. We're not able to do that. And I think times have changed and dictated that. We're, I'm for appealing the resolution.
I did want to add too, we talked about Daily City a little bit. We mentioned this at the last meeting in June. Our practice will remain to provide top-notch service during work hours and after work hours. So, if a citizen has an issue, whether or not they have a cleanout, whether or not they have a warranty program or whatever, we will roll a truck, help the citizen as best we can, which is what we do now. Oftentimes, a citizen doesn't have a cleanout and our crews respond, help that citizen, maybe talk to the plumber if the plumber was, that just happened last Thursday, and help them locate where the main will be. We'll check the mains as well to make sure that's not an issue. And we'll try to work through with the homeowner as best we can and then hand them off to the best resource possible. So, we're still going to provide that customer service. We owe that to our citizens.
Ken?
This is a major change. And I understand because, you know, it's an old community, it's an old infrastructure. And I'm just curious, I mean, I don't believe that people are getting cleanouts to be able to take advantage of the city to repair their laterals. That's a policy that the building department set years ago, is that when you do a certain type of project, you've got to put a cleanout. And they just, they did it. I'm curious as to, and let me just get this, I'm against point-of-sale, but I don't think that that really is part of this. This is now taking all of the responsibility off of the city in replacing these laterals, no matter whether the house, property sells or not. I'm just curious as to where did it come about that the city was responsible from the property line to the main? I mean, it took us a long time to really get people, and a lot of people aren't even accepting the fact that it's their responsibility to fix their sidewalks. You know, all this stuff in the right-of-way is, they just feel that it's the city's responsibility. So, how are we, I mean, is it, are we legally able to, you know, put that on the property owner? And I guess what I'd really like to know is, where did we come off? Where does the cities, in the history, come off saying that we're going to be taking care of these, you know, for, as far as people know, for perpetuity? And now, you know, now when we have deteriorating systems, and I fully understand that it's just going to grow and it's going to get, if, you know, someone's going to pay for new laterals, whether it's the city or the property owner. But, you know, where...
I can answer the legal question, which is, this appears to be a fairly longstanding policy of the city, a longstanding policy that benefited and currently benefits only a very few individuals, now at a cost that far exceeds the original intention of the program. From a legal standpoint, some cities actually do say and have an ordinance that says the property owner is responsible for the entire lateral, from the house all the way to the main. The City of San Bruno could do that. They've chosen not to do that over the years. And while you're correct, this is a, would be, a potentially large change in policy, it was pointed out by the staff report, it's a large change for a very small number of individuals. And those individuals and others that are similarly situated can easily apply for and obtain warranty coverage, which would protect them for most, if not all, of the anticipated cost. So, for the 1% or 2% of the individuals who might have a very large cost that they want to avoid, they and others can purchase the warranty coverage that will protect them and others in the community.
And that's the thing, is that to be fiscally responsible here, as we sit up here and try to cover these anticipated costs, it's going to be a lot more than nine bucks a month, you know? To do capital improvement projects, to be able to cover and to see that you're looking at half a million dollars to escalated to a million and plus, you know, per year until every single sewer lateral is replaced. It's, I mean, we look at sidewalks and say, "We can't replace them all." You know, we look at streets and we say, "We can't, you know, we can't fix all the streets. We're behind on that." So, it's, to me, it's just a matter of, you know, more outreach than anything to let the property owners know that it's just not, we're not capable of it.
One of the things that we found in doing the research in the background, especially for the June 24th, was what other cities are doing. And what we found was other cities who are under a consent decree have either changed this policy, if they had one, or are in the process of doing so because they have to. Because there doesn't seem to be a way or no one's figured out yet how to keep the SSOs under the prescribed number while at the same time providing that same level of service that they've had for who knows how many number of years. So, we did reach out, we did try to figure out what other folks are doing to try to address the issue and get all of that information to you folks to help, give us some direction.
Rico? Thank you. I'm going to ask some questions that can come back. They don't need to all be answered, but I'm looking at the resources of staff time and the costs. You listed some of those this evening. So, if this goes forward and then that ownership becomes to the resident or the homeowner, then, you know, we're saving in some respects. How much is that? How much staff time? Are those resources being reallocated? Can they be deducted? Are we doing through attrition? I'd like to know and have that quantified. When stuff like this comes up, we're talking about cleanouts, kind of had it at the property line, was where the city would then maintain. So, if we're going to bring it up to a resident and they're going to have to do it, are we going to dictate to them that they have to have one at the property line? Because if we do a trenchless, you could be saving $2,000 to $4,000 by not having and requiring that one and just having it at the house. But again, it's their ownership. But I'd like to have that answered because I want to see where we're talking about as far as trying to make it simple, try to be reasonable with the type of materials. Are we going to be requiring people to only utilize certain services? If they go through the warranty, of course, that's already taken care of. Or are we just saying, "You're on your own"? So, if you want to find the best deal in town, which gives you one-year warranty and it start, it's darn, you know, inexpensive, they go forward with it and it's not quality work, then we have potholes and we have other issues that arise. So, I want to look at it on a broader base. I also worry about those individuals that may not have the economic means. So, what happens if they're in a situation? Do we give them a timeline? Is somebody turning their water off? I mean, where is it at? I really think these, and that sounds really dramatic, but I think these are questions that people come up with and they, I think, would want to know. I know other cities offer some assistance, like South City and San Mateo. There's others that I think we can look to. I know there is a fee that has been collected. I don't know what that is in a year. Maybe it's $135,000 or something. Does that come off? Does that money get redirected for some assistance to those that may have a need? Maybe you can help 20 or 30 individuals that may be in low economic status. You know, I know that it has gotten too expensive for us to maintain, but obviously, we've been collecting a fee that hasn't been raised to help offset those costs, which, whether it's a fee or not, but we have been. So, I think those are some of the immediate questions I have. And just as far as making it extremely simplistic to individuals, because sometimes when you haven't dealt with plumbing and you haven't dealt with stuff you can't see and you don't understand, you start talking about the bureaucracy at City Hall and the requirements that we place on people and what's going to have to come out of their pocket. And I know you said $8,000, but really, the way you later explained it on this service was $4,000 and potentially another $4,000 if it was the whole line. So, obviously, there could be out-of-pocket expenses depending upon specifics to their situation. So, those are some of my immediate comments off the top of my head.
I'd be happy to take a shot at a couple of those questions. The one about staffing, one of the things that the consent decree required of the wastewater group was increased maintenance scheduling and a lot of the schedules that we had led to more staff time. So, one of the things we'll be able to do if this shift was made, this change was made, is to put more effort into manhole inspections and a lot of the other things that we need to be doing. And also CCTV, which is in our CIP, you'll see that as part of the CIP program, to ramp up in that area where we need to be doing inspection, a lot of these older lines that have been inspected once and now we need to be followed up to help target some of the repairs. So, our staff works incredibly hard and they do a good job, but one of the things that we need to do more of is some of those routine things that we aren't necessarily able to as we should because we're tied up with a lateral response quite often. The one about the cost for the lateral program, one of the things we want to do, I mean, for the warranty program, during the handout phase, we have some descriptive pictures of what a sewer line looks like, what roots look like, what cracked pipe looks like. So, the, those of us who talk about it all day may know, but we want to provide some big poster board type things so that homeowners who may come to these informational meetings or as we televise them, we'll try to get it into the most common language we can and have handouts that have, that are very visual as well so that people can understand. And also, in the meeting, the warranty company representative would be there at least at one or two of the meetings and have that discussion about what does it mean, $4,000? We talked to him at length and said, "What does that normally cover?" And he said, "95% of the repairs are covered within that 4 and 4." If you get maybe some of the pictures we saw with the really fancy rock walls and, you know, you may get into a different situation there with stamped and stained concrete, you know, all those kinds of things that may need to be replaced if the repairs of a certain type. So, but that's kind of a rare occurrence from what the provider explained to us, so.
Mr. Peterson?
Good evening, mayor and city council and staff. I live on scenic court and I sent you a letter today and it might not have got to yet, since I delivered it to the city clerk, but only this afternoon, but I'm here to ask you not to change the current repair procedure. And I would call into question the staff analysis on this. I think there's some oversimplifications in it. One thing I hadn't thought to comment on was the warranty program. When there's a warranty program, there's also the warranty rake-off. You never see that money. They don't do these warranty programs for their health. They do it because it makes money for them. So, a certain amount of every warranty bill disappears. Basically, I'm recommending the city keep the current system of city repair to sewer laterals and streets and easements. And this is because they have the equipment, they have the people, they have the materials, they have the experience. All they have to do is apply it. And I see them out there. I know they can do the work. Since 1986, property owners have paid 60 cents per month per property for this rule that you're talking about junking that I'm suggesting you hang on to. That's over $200 per owner since 1986 and 2.2 million total. I wonder where that 2.2 million is now? The city has collected this money and it's not reasonable to summarily drop this service. The city should simply mark the service to market and continue it. And I challenge the idea that it would be a ridiculously huge cost. Any of you who have ever bought insurance wouldn't expect to have insurance that you paid for 30 years on to be dropped summarily and told you couldn't get it anymore. I'm saying that's what this recommendation is and that you're considering. Thus far, many owners have benefited from this city's service and it would be unreasonable benefit to those owners if it were dropped now because other owners wouldn't be able to get the service that they've been paying for since 1986. The city suggests that each owner contract with a separate insurance service instead of continuing the city's role as it is now. This is ridiculously cost ineffective to owners, particularly versus the city doing the work. And the city doesn't do the work now anyway. They have a private contractor, they call them up and the private contractor goes out there. I've watched the private contractor. They're incredibly professional. The last two repairs I saw were over-supplied with equipment and people, but at the same time, they did a fabulous job. Where was, why wasn't the city staff doing that? You have all this equipment. Well, let's not get lost in that. But you do have, in some cases, places where these laterals are going to break in the street. I don't think it's anywhere near a huge number going to break in the next year or the next two years. Many laterals that have gone on for years functioning will continue to go on for years and function fine. And any homeowner who wants now to pay for this work in city streets and on city right-of-way may proceed to do that now or later. The citizens aren't restricted. And in some cases, they're doing that because they don't know about this magic solution where you put in a cleanout and then the city becomes responsible for the pipes in the street. These costs should remain with the city. The city should create a budget to meet these costs and the city is the appropriate party for the repairs. I'm a citizen who objects to the proposed plan. Common sense advocates maintaining the current procedure, which has been in place and working since 1986, about 28 years. And please ask me any questions you want. I know more than a little bit about sewers. And I've done more than a little bit of sewer replacement and lateral replacement.
Okay. I'm going to get some clarification from staff on a couple of your comments, but I want to hear, you want to speak?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Evening, council. I'm Jim Evangelist. I live on 105 DeSoto Way. And I just wanted, first, I'd like to get a little clarification on the point-of-sale that was recently implemented by the council based on Baykeeper's mandate. Is that only for Orangeburg that that repair has to be in? Or any, I believe that's the way it read when I was looking at the briefing sent to council. It was only if the house had Orangeburg would there be a necessary replacement if it was crushed? If that's the case, having worked in the sewer department for 11 years, there's less than 1% of the houses in San Bruno have Orangeburg. So, even though 300 houses a year may be sold in San Bruno, they're not all going to have to go through that rigorous situation. going to have to go through that rigorous situation. So now I would like to just address some of the questions that I think you should ask based on the briefing that you read. Why wasn't the household fee modified during the past eight years when this crisis about the sewers has been fomenting? This is reminiscent of the crisis you guys had to deal with when all of a sudden the state said you're getting fined two hundred, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This crisis has been brewing and apparently, management hasn't been dealing with it. They've just let this simmer. Now they're presenting to you almost unworkable situation. And certainly, you're going to go to the default, easiest way to go. That's what they're hoping, and that is, let's just get rid of this responsibility. If you read the resolution that we have, nineteen eighty-six resolution, sixty cents a month was for expanded services. It didn't take ownership of the lateral, although they were still reporting SSOs out of it. That's a legal issue. I have no idea which was right or wrong. So also, I would like to say, if they increased to two dollars per month per household, that would generate over a quarter of a million dollars annually to work on laterals. And once you repair a lateral, ideally, you're not going to have to, it's not going to be continued maintenance or have to go back and repair it again if it's done properly. And I understand that we have to keep those SSOs down. I'm for that as much as anybody else here is. But I think that, I've lost my train of thought, sorry. I think that if you're going to make this decision based on that criteria, that you're going to help the city get out from underneath these, then I suggest that you reevaluate the number of staff because I know there are two people at least dedicated to lateral maintenance. I did it myself for two years. And that should be reevaluated. The money could be diverted into CIP projects. So there is ways of making, paying back to residents for putting them in the position of now taking the responsibility of their entire lateral. I think that this is a unique plan. I agree. It's manageable if it's run really well, if the crews are, instead of outsourcing the repairs, which has accelerated the costs. We used to do all the lateral repairs virtually, and then for the last four years, I believe that's all been outsourced. So naturally, not only the people that we used to pay with our, with salaries that used to do the lateral repairs, we're not utilizing in that situation, they're being, all that work is being outsourced to a private company. So naturally, the costs will accelerate. And I was, I'm just wondering also why it's taken so long for management to respond to the lateral SSO crisis. They really didn't start to do really a lot of in-house repairs until about two thousand and ten. And since then, it's really been a lot more repairs on the laterals, but it's been done by outside contractors. So those kind of questions, I think, have to be asked of the department itself. And then maybe you better understand why we're in the situation we are right now, that I believe should have been able to be under control. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Couple of questions for staff or comments. I mean, Mr. Peterson said sixty cents times all of these years is two point two million dollars, but I understand from the staff report that just this year alone, projected to spend five hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, we're way, way behind on the sixty cents. It's not even going to come close to anything. Maybe you can clarify the point of sale regarding orangeburg versus other types of pipes?
So as I understand it, that does, that is a requirement, the consent decree that talks about specifically about orangeburg and the dates. I believe it's nineteen forty to nineteen sixty. I'm going off memory. The council decided to expand that and include all homes built before nineteen sixty and not try to delineate which ones had orangeburg and which ones didn't.
Question, I don't know how to answer this. Why was the fee not modified, this sixty cents? Why wasn't it increased? And, I mean, I wouldn't even know, what would you increase it to? I mean.
Yeah. We have not done a calculation to determine how, what would need to be added to the existing wastewater rates. And I'm sorry to say that none of your staff here has a good understanding about why that fee wasn't raised at some point in the past. What I can tell you is that the way that the wastewater rates are set, and in particular, consistent with Proposition two eighteen, which is a much more recent phenomena, obviously than nineteen eighty-six, is that the total cost of all aspects of the capital and the operating program, including work that we do to maintain sewer laterals, but including everything else, is captured and evaluated and then considered as part of the, in total, what the rate needs to be in order to cover those costs. So the, the rate of the sixty cents per month, whether that is, you know, how that got started or what is its utility, it is certainly not sufficient to make a dent in the annual cost that the city is expending in the, in the current time period for its services under this program. There is no line item in the rate structure that calls out that amount. So how that, how that got established or what the cost would be, other than I can tell you, it would be substantially more than that if it was factored into a monthly charge.
Okay. Then it was brought up about use of outside contractors. They, the city just, I mean, I understand that regardless of whether the city does it or outside contractors still have to be paid, but maybe you can comment on that, on the use of them.
So one of the things that, in looking at the SSO numbers, there used to be in the thirties and forties in SSOs. And while crews did do some repairs that are now done by contractors, when, at least in my estimation, when crews did that, they weren't able to do the frequent maintenance type activities. And when, once we made that switch to an outside contractor that could target those individual repairs, that allowed our crews to focus on the, more of the maintenance activities instead of repair. And those maintenance activities are the things that prevent SSOs, and the SSO numbers dropped off significantly down to, we have six this year. That is a direct result of the decision to utilize outside resources to do the bigger work, you might say. We have one dump truck. It's a small dump truck. We have one backhoe. We just do not have the resources that a contractor can bring to bear on some of these more complicated or deep digs, so to speak. We would tie up our whole entire crew. We're better, the city is better served by spreading our resources out to do those maintenance type activities. We will do the same thing and make some significant gains on some of those issues like manhole inspections and others if this policy is changed. So we, we're stretched kind of thin now to do what we need to do, but with the CMMS system and with some targeted maintenance, we're doing some good things. So, and the contractor is as well.
Okay. Here you go.
On that point, if my memory is correct, SSOs were going down prior to CMMS because of staff and the diligence of the crew, before all this outsourcing and all of that. So I also want to be fair to those that have been in the field in that, because I would ask the question periodically, we have study sessions, and it was like, wow, they were going down. And I'm sure if I asked staff to produce data, we would see that. So I want to be fair too, because in essence, we are taking that staff, like you said, redirecting them for other avenues, taking on the contract, contract outsourcing, because obviously, you were trying to do a balance. And so we have increased a lot of overhead to the line item for outside services.
And I think there's a lot of factors that go into that. You know, some of the CIP projects that have gone in, some of the pump station repairs and upgrades that have happened, some of the improvements that Dennis's crew has made out in the field has improved and reduced some SSOs. So there's a lot of things, and you're correct, there's a lot of things go into that.
I just want to make sure we answered all of your questions or addressed them anyway.
Well, we have reduced the SSO.
Right, close to the mic there.
We have reduced the SSO dramatically. And a great deal of that was done when you, the city council allocated emergency hotspot and emergency repairs. When those were done, and that took a couple of years, a trinet construction firm came in there, that started the SSO count to dwindle. And once they left, there has to be a point at some time, at some point where after all the chronic, and these were chronic sites, the repeated SSOs were finally fixed, we don't have the SSOs out of there any longer. For instance, we're going to be redoing Trenton soon, Trenton Outfall. Many SSOs over the years happened there. We finally fixed a twenty-foot section in about two thousand and ten. We haven't had an SSO out of there yet since then. So that's one of the really reasons why that the count of SSOs has gone down. And anybody who manages a sewer system knows that that would have happened. That's what it takes to stop the SSOs, is repair the troubled spots. That's why the CCTV is done. We've had that done by an outside contractor in the past. I don't know if any of the tapes were reviewed, but there certainly wasn't any reaction in terms of a proactive solution or repairs of spots until just recently. So that's part of the reason the SSOs are down.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments from council, questions, direction? Let's make it quick because we've got a lot of quick comments.
I only got the agenda Friday, so I didn't have a lot of time to prepare. If you would like to see a petition with five hundred signatures on it that you should maintain the current policy and not change it, I can do that. It's not, everybody I've talked to thinks it's nuts to change the approach. Just recognize that you need to make a financial plan for it. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Direction to staff? Ken?
You know, judging from what Mr. Peterson says and judging from what you've heard of, you know, why didn't we do this? Why didn't we do that? Okay, past history. What is the other option? How much would we have to raise? How much would we have to go from sixty cents up? I know we don't know, but we'd have to come up with something. And if that's, if that's what the, if this board wants to, you know, take on, or if that's what the, you know, the residents would prefer, fine. But I mean, at sixty cents a month, it's not going to happen. So what should it be? You know, are we going to get into increasing our CIP to take on something that people feel that it's our responsibility?
So sixty cents is, is kind of an irrelevant feature of a historical resolution. It has no relevance to the cost of delivering the program or what the cost, and this is our primary concern, is the escalation of costs and trending as we see those costs and that activity level trending. So we could certainly make some projections for you, but currently, costs are being covered by the wastewater rates. We would anticipate that wastewater rates would need to be raised as the escalation of activity increases, as we're, as activity levels increase as we're projecting. We could try and do some projections on that, but the sixty cents is really irrelevant to the cost of delivering the service.
Yeah, and I realize that, and it, yeah, it's just a, it's, I think that's the thing, is that if we, if, as, as a department, as, you know, as a city council, just like the mains, just like the pump stations, just like, you know, all the other infrastructure, maybe we need to, you know, put something out there as to this is what it's going to take. We've got the data. We know, we anticipate our projections as to how many over the next ten, twenty years, you know, are going to start failing. And, you know, we have the data as to what, what we're not keeping up with right now. I think that's, you know, that's the argument, whether we're going to go in that direction or not, but I think that's the argument we need to communicate, you know, to the, to the community that it's, we'll, you know, if we do, if you do want us to keep, you know, keep the program, this is what we have to, you know, to, to do to change it.
I think, the other comment I want to make, and I'm just kind of thinking out loud here, is, I mean, suppose that number were eight dollars a month or something. You can get insurance, apparently, for nine bucks a month. It's going to cover pretty much what you have to do. And it is, in fact, very, very cheap insurance. I, early this year, just had to replace my lateral, and with it, I put in a clean-out. So the city comes by, I'm one of the guys that, that's on the list, and they can buy, I think it's every six months, and take a look and stuff. So hopefully, down the road, I don't have to dig up a sidewalk and a retaining wall and a street and everything else at my expense. I'd be one of the first to sign up for it. But I know what you're speaking about, and I had to do it, you know, and it was a nice piece of change. So I'm just speaking from experience. But I can look at it another way, too. I mean, the citizens of San Bruno have been very fortunate to have had this service for many, many years. Not comparing us to other cities, but other cities have said, hey, it cheers all the way out, all the way from the house, all the way out into the main for many years. And people tell me, you have what? The city covers that? Yeah. So I think it's something we've had for a long time, and, and like I said, I'm one of those that just had to do it this year and put it to clean-out, but I'm still in favor of having the, having the homeowner pick it up because it's unsustainable, unsustainable. We can talk all we want, but the more we talk, the longer, you know, these things get aged. So it's going to be an ongoing problem because for the most part, we have an old community. That's just my feeling.
That's one of the reasons why it was important to us as we went through the research to give the council and citizens an option so that we weren't advocating to change the policy and then say, that's it. We want, that's why we researched the warranty companies, and that's, we wanted to provide them an outlet, a way of self-help, and nine dollars a month could get citizens to that point. And in, under your direction, one of the things that we think is really important is that public outreach, that we're not just going to have sort of a short-term outreach in that regard. It would be an ongoing thing because we want people to, to make it available to their own home so they don't have to pay those increased costs if they do have a problem and they do have a twenty-four-hour service and they get in that bind, because we get the phone calls, but they'll be able to rely on someone to get there and get it repaired. So.
One thing I'd like to add, under the warranty program, right now, we could go out to a house, and let's say they have a clean-out, but the blockage isn't in the lower lateral, it's in the upper lateral. So with just explaining, and I think offhand, a plumber just to respond to your house could be maybe at a seventy-five, ninety-five dollars, and then if they do a video, I think I've seen a hundred and fifty. So in a sense, if they were to go with the warranty program, not only are they covered from the lower lateral, but they're given the, they're given the protection of the upper lateral that we can do nothing for them at this point. So there is that, there is that benefit. And we researched it extensively as part of the, we could give more information later, but as part of the warranty program, they also offer other things like, you know, if you want to insure the piping in your house, because now my mother's going to insure everything because she sees, she sees the value in it. And I understand a dollar's a dollar, and, and it's tough to make that dollar sometimes, but if someone were to have that, when we were to go out there and if the blockage isn't in the lower lateral, they would be able to be covered for that upper lateral. in the lower lateral, they would be able to be covered for that upper lateral. So that's, that's a benefit to them, and they're going to get that service, for the most part, from a cost-benefit analysis, either at or cheaper than what it would have been to just call out a plumber to, to relieve that problem.
Direction for the rest of the council? Rico?
The only thing I was saying is, is options. When we say it's not sustainable, that's because of the 60 cents, which the manager's correct, that's just a number that, that doesn't work, obviously. So what would that number be? I think that's the question that maybe even Councilmember Barrett was asking, because I think you're trying to show the public options. We're seeing 25% of it currently, 25% of the 11,000 currently have it. So if there's the option of those go up in order to make it sustainable, is that an option? And what is that? Because obviously, we're offering, what we're trying to say is, the city can only do this much, we're going to offer you a private service that can do this much, and you can get inter, interior, thank you, and external coverage. But at the same time, too, I think we need to, some of the questions have been raised. I think they deserve answers. I think it, it's our responsibility to have answers. And if we don't know what that cost is, a person can look to us and say, well, that's great for you because you're not paying the $9 a month. I am. So what does it cost you? We're talking about whether it's the contractors or this or that. I, I just think before some resolution comes before the council, the questions that were raised need to be addressed, need to have answer and have options. And I think then if you present it to the public and if they want to sign a petition or if they say, you know what, honestly, I'd rather go with the private service because I'm going to get more bang for my buck, I think that's something that you present to people and let they make the decision. And when they're well informed, I think it gives them opportunity to make those decisions.
Irene?
Thank you. I appreciate what you said, and I, I think we could, the staff could probably come back with a number. So just to make, make sure I have the scenario right. Right now, if you have a blockage in your lateral that's close to your house, you don't have a cleanout, it's close to your house, you're responsible for it.
Property work owner is responsible.
Property owner's responsible for it. Okay. That can take up too, and I had mine done, but it was maybe 10 or 15 years ago, so that was $5,000. There was no recourse. There was no insurance. There was nothing. I had to pay the whole bill. It now has a cleanout, but it's only two feet from the main. So I still have responsibility from the cleanout all the way to my house, and my sewer line runs to the back of my house, so it's a long run. Okay. So what we're offering now and encouraging people to think about is an insurance policy that covers from the house all the way down to the street, and it costs $9 a month. If we took the increased half a million dollar cost of the lateral fixings that we do now and project even more in the future, can, can I, and my math is really bad, I was looking at my other thing and it's just wrong, how much per month, per resident, is that going to cost? That's basically, that's the, that's the question, because if each of us pay $9 a month, everybody in the city, and that is, that covers the cost, is that what we're willing to do instead of the 25%? If they paid the $9 a month and the rest of us don't have to? So that's the question. It's, am I making myself clear? The que, so, so if, if, if the city, the whole, the city as a whole bears the cost of doing the laterals, and we don't rescind the order and we say, okay, we're going to, we're going to take care of this, we're all going to pay for this, how much a month is that? It's 11,000 residents, or 11,000 water sewer bills, X amount per month. Are we all willing to pay that per month so that 25% of the people don't pay $9 a month? I guess is the question. I, I'm trying to, I'm, I'm trying to get people to understand that it's either 100% paying X amount, or it's whoever chooses to pay the $9 a month for this, the insurance, which covers more than the city would cover anyway. Does that make sense?
I mean, you're right as far as the coverage, and I mean, as far as the home warranty or warranty, I can get that now. I don't have to wait for this.
Well, exactly.
We've all had that option. So I've already been paying, city of San Bruno, I don't know, I don't have the personal one, but I mean, I could, and with the waiting period, of course, and I can use this, I could use somebody else. We're just saying we've done some homework on this. We're not advocating, I believe, that that's the only option that the residents of this community have. And you're right, we do make some choices. So if I don't want to have a cleanout at my house and there's a clog, then they're going to have to pull and reset the toilet, and that's going to be very expensive. So there are choices. Now, that still wouldn't cover with this warranty, but again, we're bringing forward some options. So I think when you place it before people, they can see the variables that are, you know, it's hard to single people out. Like you said, okay, well, you pay, but you don't. But I think at the same time, if the question is being asked, how much is it going to cost to make it sustainable? And we don't know. I think people deserve that information.
I'm not saying they don't deserve it. I'm, I'm trying to frame it to explain how it would come out. So, so, because, because eventually, it's us who's going to have to make the choice, a part of the choice, and not, not just the person, no matter how much information we put out there.
And let's be honest with each other. We just had a water sewer rate not too long ago. That was a close vote. But at the same time, if some people are looking at this going, oh, wait a minute. If you're telling me I'm going to spend $9 more a month on my water sewer bill, I'm not okay with that. There are people that are okay today. That's why I voted no. But at the same time, we do have the other burden of having to provide the service and make sure that the system works. So I think that's what would help enlighten folks to what the options and what the reality of what we're talking about.
Yes, and that's what I'm saying. So there you go.
It sounds like, it sounds to me like there's people out there that are going more quickly.
If you want to, if you want to speak, address us at the...
It just, from listening to you guys, it just sounds like to me that there's companies out there are being way more efficient than what we're being in. I, you know, as my, San Bruno, the people of San Bruno, I hate to see anybody not be here working. I'd love to see more people working here, but it just sounds to me like that if some other company can come here and protect all of our sewer laterals for $9 a month each, but it's going to cost them 500, our city, $500,000 to keep up on this 25% of these that they got to replace, and over the years, it's going to continue to grow and grow. Something just doesn't sound right here to me, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the point I was trying to make.
Okay. So I told staff how I felt about it. Ken?
I need more information on it. I think whether we have a study session or something and just get both sides out there, I think I could make a better decision. I am very concerned about, you know, maintaining the system and, and, you know, reaching that no more than, you know, the single-digit SSOs, because then we're going to pay more. We're going to get hit again. But it's, I don't, I don't want to say that we're not prepared to pay for this, but we, you know, we haven't budgeted for it. And that's what we're supposed to do. If that's a service that we're supposed to, you know, provide to our residents, then we have to let them know that this is how much it costs. And I think we're giving it away, and we've been giving it away. So if that's the policy we want, if this council wants to vote to keep giving it away, that's one thing. But if we, if we're going to keep it or going to pass it on to, you know, to outside, then I think we need to hear all sides.
Rico?
I've made my comments, and I also think whether it's a study session, I think it would be value, of value with coming back with some of the questions that have been asked by council as well and community.
Irene?
Let me see more.
I don't know if we've given you firm enough direction. It sounds like we want some more information on a, on a study session, although tonight was kind of a study session, but, yeah, I think, let's go ahead and get that done so we're all on the same page. Okay? Anything else? All right. Item number 12, comments from council members. Item 13, closed session. We had it just before the meeting. Item 14 is adjournment. This next regular city council meeting, we meet on October 28th, right here.